I'll open the meeting as soon as I can get my microphone unhooked. Here, here we go. There we go. It's stuck there. All right, welcome. And I'd like to call a meeting to order. This is the San Bruno City Council Meeting, December 13th, 2011. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for their festive floral arrangement. They always provide for us. And, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Uh, City Clerk Bonner. Ladies and the Fledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one announcement. There will not be a city council meeting on the 4th Tuesday of December. We're gonna celebrate the holidays with everybody else. Uh, presentations. We have a distinct honor tonight of presenting a 25-year service anniversary certificate and pin to Steven Vedder, Parks Maintenance Worker Number Two. And, uh, Steve began his career with the City of San Bruno's Park Division on October 27th, 1986. And during the past 25 years, Steve has worked on all of the different parks and landscape maintenance crews, including the seasonal tree crew. While working for the city, Steve earned his Associate of Science degree in ornamental horticulture by attending evening classes at City College of San Francisco. And Steve has Qualified Applicant Certificate from the State Department of Pesticide Regulations. And among Steve's current assignments are maintenance of the landscaping areas around City Hall, Yelcomino Real Medians, in the downtown area, including the Wells Fargo site. Congratulations, Steve. I'll present this to you now.
I'd just like to thank the City of San Bruno for this honor. Um, it's, it's been quite a challenge working with the City of San Bruno. So, some highs and some lows, and, uh, it's been good. I, I definitely am thankful and grateful, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Through the chair.
I read.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Steve. I know what the whole council does, but this man, I walk my dog past City Hall almost every morning, and he's there picking up trash and making the city complex area look beautiful. And I say to him, "Don't you get frustrated?" Or, "How hard are you?" And he always has a smile. It doesn't matter what the weather is, how much garbage he has to pick up, what he's doing. He always has a smile, and he's always willing for, um, to face the challenge. So, thank you very much, Steve.
Great. Congratulations once again. Uh, Presentations. Item B. We're gonna conduct the annual reorganization of the city council and appointment of Vice Mayor to serve a one-year term. City Clerk.
Each year, San Bruno does their annual rotation of the Vice Mayor according to our Muni Code, which addresses the selection as follows. In subsection B, it says that the Vice Mayor shall be selected from those who have not served as either Mayor or Vice Mayor. If all council members have so served, then the Vice Mayor shall be the person whose service as Mayor or Vice Mayor was least recent. Having said that, tonight, Ken Ibera will become Vice Mayor until we do it all over again next year.
Should I get to be Mayor next year?
All right. Do we need to do anything formal, or, okay? You're it. No, we'll do that next meeting. Stay where you are.
I was looking, I was looking forward to poking him.
To poking him?
Yeah.
You can poke him after the meeting. Item number five is Review of the Agenda. Uh, I'd like to move item 11, uh, up to right after public hearings, but I understand that, uh, the presenter for the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee is not here yet, so when he arrives, we will have his presentation. Any other changes on the agenda? Okay. Item number six, Approval of the Minutes of the City Council Meeting, Special City Council Meeting of November 22nd, 2011, and the City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Meeting of November 22nd, 2011. Any changes, errors, omissions? Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
If there being, uh, nothing, I'll go ahead and move to approve Consent Calendar. Second?
Motion second to approve the Consent Calendar. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight, Public Hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed, and, uh, we are going to receive the report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee when that presenter arrives. Item number nine, Public Comment. On items not on the agenda, it is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone in the public like to address the council? Mr. George? State your name and your street.
My name is Bob George. I live here in San Bruno on Chabot Drive, and I'm here bearing gifts. I'm here in my capacity as a 10-year member of the Board of Directors of HIP Housing in San Mateo County. HIP is an acronym for the Human Investment Project, and we are a private, nonprofit agency engaged in the effort to find affordable housing for people here in San Mateo County who need it. HIP will be 40-years-old this coming year, and it's, it's a celebration that we're about to begin. One of the items that we've also become noted for is a, is something of an anachronism in this digital age, but it's a paper calendar. And I'm here again this year to give each of you a copy of that calendar. As you know well, it's, it's based on children's art this year. Candidates came from elementary schools in, um, I hope I get this right, Daly City, Foster City, and San Mateo County. Eight little people from kindergarten through the fifth grade. And we, City of San Bruno has been very generous to HIP and has participated in our programs. We've had a number of folks from San Bruno live in our accommodations, and, uh, that's why I'm here tonight, is to share this calendar with you and with other members of staff that, that you'd like to distribute them to. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And thanks for all your efforts, uh, on behalf of HIP. I know HIP is, uh, very busy now, especially in this hard economic time, so they do a great job. So, thank you once again. Anyone else like to address the city council? All right. Item number 10, Conduct of Business. Item A is receive an oral report regarding the schedule for renovation of the Treetops Pacific Bay Vista's apartment complex.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I will keep this brief. My, my voice is going, so it'll be a short presentation before I turn it over to the developer. The Treetops Apartment Complex, the city council knows well, it has sat vacant for over a five-year period now. And through this five-year period, the developer has had several different approvals, approved by the Planning Commission and the city council. The most recent approval, um, required that their development start by June of 2011. Earlier this year, the developer came and asked for an extension, um, in order to get all their financing in line. Um, this, uh, this extension required the developer break ground on the renovation of the Treetops Apartment Complex by December 22nd, a couple of weeks from now. Since that time, the developer has been getting in line. The main constraint has been getting HUD, their HUD financing in place. Fortunately, this has taken place. I spoke to the, uh, the director at the San Francisco HUD today, and they said they will be giving Aimco their notice to proceed on December 20th of next week. And after that, the developer can go, can break ground and start the development, both on the utilities as well as the buildings themselves. Developer has also paid for all their building permits and paid for all their improvement plans, and will be obtaining those permits this week as well. So, I could take any questions at this time about the development. And also, Sean Finnegan from Aimco, the developer, is also here to give a short presentation as well as answer any questions.
Any questions first from, uh, for Aaron? Okay. Sean?
Mayor, members of the city council, I want to thank you for your time this evening, and I want to thank Aaron as well. And we are happy to announce that we did pull all the permits today. Uh, I want to thank Gary Leporey and Clara, their departments, Nader and Frank and Darcy for doing a great job of getting these all pulled together. They kind of rolled out the red carpet for us today, and, uh, we did, as Aaron mentioned, pay the $883,000 permits, uh, yesterday. So, that's been done, and we're excited that Aaron actually received a call from HUD prior to us even finding out that we had a closing date of next Tuesday. So, we're just really excited about that. And what we plan on doing prior to the 22nd to vest it is, upon closing on the, on the 20th, next Tuesday, we will be starting the water line plans. Uh, that's the very first thing we have to do. That's the infrastructure. And then we'll be proceeding into what is a three-to-four-month process of the underground infrastructure and the demolition of the exterior of the buildings. The first seven months, what we will be accomplishing is the complete dry-in of the project, which means the roofs, the siding, everything dried in on all the buildings. At that period of time, we will have the clubhouse done, the fitness building done, and the first two apartment buildings done. After that, every two months, there'll be three apartment buildings done for a period of 15 months. So, we're, again, very excited about this proceeding ahead finally, and HUD did wait till the very last minute, but we got it.
Is it safe to assume we'll see some work up there actually before the first of the year?
Yes, we will. Like I said, we, we're gonna be performing work, uh, on the water lines immediately on the 21st.
Great. I've been getting an awful lot of questions and inquiries about the delay, so hopefully that'll put it to bed.
Very good.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Rico.
Real quick, uh, obviously, this has been a project that everybody has been waiting for, five-plus years. The residents and neighbors up in that area, of course, have had to contend with what I'll call, right now, is an eyesore. But more or less, for all the, the work that's going to get done, what measures are we taking to lessen the impact to the residents and neighbors up there? Because obviously, they've already gone, in some ways, through a lot. And I want to try to, and I think we all do, want to make sure that it's as less impacted them as possible. So, what measures are we taking so to try to lessen that impact?
Sure. We've been working closely with Aaron over the past year. We've had various neighborhood meetings where we've invited the neighborhood to come out, and we've been able to present, again, the phasing of the project, how we're going to be improving the roads, uh, hopefully, when we can tell them when the road closures will be. One thing we've worked out with Clara's department, with Public Services, is an advance notice of when road closures will be. We're hoping to give about two weeks' notice every time we close various sections of the roads. That's probably the most inconvenience that they'll have. They'll just have to get used to a little detours every so often. That major impact will only be for the first four or five months of the project, and that's when the main impact of the deep utilities and the road repavement's going to, gonna happen.
Ken?
Congratulations again. Long awaited. Going along with the concerns of the neighborhood, we know that there's, you know, it was closed because of health risks and, and, you know, materials. So, as this, two questions. As this demolition starts, you know, do the neigh, do the residents have any, uh, anything to fear? Is there any concerns that they should have with, with demolition as far as airborne materials and stuff? And two, where is, where is all this demolition material if it's contaminated? And you can answer whether it is or not. Where will it be taken?
One, what we've done is we've done complete environmental studies of the project. There's no asbestos, no lead on the property at all. Most of what you're seeing out there is a, an algae buildup. There's not a lot of mold. There are a few units that do have, uh, black mold in them. Those will be properly abated per, you know, local, state, and federal standards, so we do have an abatement program that will happen. Other than that, the recycling will be per city code, and I believe it's either 50% or 65% will be recycled as, as the code allows.
Yeah. And so, there, the demolition is going to be basically like piece by piece, you know, since you are leaving the shell of the structure up, so there won't be a lot of, I guess, demolition activity, you know, so to speak.
Right. It, it does come down in a surgical aspect, if that's kind of what you're getting at, the siding and, and the, uh, and the inside sheet rock will come out, and the roof materials, it all kind of comes off in pieces, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We're really looking forward to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Item 10B, Adopt a Resolution Confirming the Scope of Infrastructure Repairs and Improvements Related to the Reconstruction of the Crestmore-Glenview Neighborhood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Hi, my name's Harry Burrows, and I'm the City's Project Manager for the Crestmore-Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to confirm the guidance that we received from, um, the council at the study session that was held on November 8th, um, last month. The recommendations that we're gonna discuss here tonight, that we also discussed at the, um, study session, are framed by two basic policy questions. The first is, you know, what is the geographic scope of the infrastructure replacement and reconstruction? And the second is, should we focus on just repairing the damage of the event, or should we focus on rebuilding an entire community and neighborhood? Before we go into those recommendations, wanted to take a quick second to just review some of the projects that have been completed and approved to date. These include the surface restoration work that occurred out there at Glenview and Earl, filling the crater, the blast crater, as well as repaving the streets, and opening up the roadway and making the area safe for the public, um, including some sidewalk repairs and other, um, safety repairs. In addition to that, we're currently in construction with the Phase 1 sanitary sewer project, and that's what's shown there on green. And the Phase 1 water improvements are currently out to bid. We're expecting to open bids in early January, I think scheduled for January 4th, and construction will occur in subsequently, probably February, March timeframe. Briefly, to summarize the study session, we went into quite a bit of detail. We presented this sheet, and I believe we have some of these, um, in the back of the, or in the front of the room here, um, if anyone wants to look at it in detail. But we went into a great amount of detail categorizing the recommended projects into three different categories. And those categories were improvements that must be made to return the utilities to their pre-fire condition and operation. The second category was improvements that are recommended to maintain public safety, meet current city and industry standards, and to reduce future maintenance and replacement costs. And then the third category were improvements that are not vital but will provide additional benefit to the neighborhood. The recommendations were based upon several or multiple project assumptions which are listed here. We went over those in the study session in a great amount of detail. I won't spend any time going over those here this evening. When we talk about the recommended projects, we'll refer to two different types or two descriptions. One is fire damaged area improvements, and the other is improvements in the remaining neighborhood. And this graphic is meant to illustrate the differences of the geographic boundaries of those improvements, with the red being the fire damaged area and the blue being, being the remaining area. So, jumping into the recommended projects, um, streets, the recommendations are that we reconstruct all streets within the fire damaged area in their entirety. In the remainder of the neighborhood, we're recommending that we reconstruct, overlay, or slurry seal those streets based upon their evaluated condition, and though those evaluations are occurring now. The, um, last item related to streets is that where possible, we integrate traffic calming measures, enhance streetscape and landscaping, and stormwater treatment.
Excuse me, Harry. Quick question. Well, the, you said the streets are being evaluated now. Will they be further damaged with the construction and, and everything else that's gonna go on in the future? Is it better to evaluate them now or after the fact?
Well, there will be some additional wear and tear that obviously will occur with this heavy construction going on, but in terms of the ultimate recommendations, that's probably minimal. So, the, the evaluations that'll, that will be occurring, you know, now, we'll, we'll address that.
All right.
In terms of sewer, um, a lot of the infrastructure falls into the same category. It's 50-plus years old. It's, it's aging infrastructure. The, the sewer experiences infiltration and inflow, um, in many areas. So, we're recommending that particularly in the damaged area, the fire damaged area, that all those sewers get replaced. We're also recommending that in the remainder of the neighborhood, the sewer gets replaced and upsized to current standards. The, most of the collection system out there is six-inch. The current industry standard is eight-inch. So, if, if upsized, it would be to eight-inch. Water lines, again, the water lines, being 50-years-old plus, they are experiencing a lot of internal corrosion. They're cast iron pipes primarily. There's some asbestos cement pipe out there as well, and a lot of sedimentation that's just natural in, in older utilities. Our recommendation is to replace all the water lines within the fire damaged area as well as to replace and upsize the water lines throughout the remaining neighborhood. In terms of storm drainage, there are several localized areas in the neighborhood, particularly in the fire damaged area, that, um, are experiencing drainage problems, some low points, uh, some, um, drainage issues at intersections, as well as lack of connection of some of the valley gutters in the neighborhood to a positive storm drain system. So, we're recommending that, um, those improvements be made. We're also recommending that, uh, the remainder of the neighborhood be evaluated in terms of drainage issues and where those are, exist, that those be, um, improved as well, fixed and improved as well. Sidewalks and ADA ramps, within the fire damaged area, we're recommending that all fire damaged curb gutter and sidewalks be replaced. In addition to the damage directly from the fire, a lot of damage occurred to curb gutter and sidewalks during the demolition and cleanup. The sidewalks in the remainder of the neighborhood, we're recommending that those be evaluated and repaired or replaced based upon the current city, um, standard criteria. With the exception of intersections, we're recommending that new ADA ramps, um, to meet current standards, be installed at all the intersections. Streetlight system, we've talked about this before. The existing streetlight system in the neighborhood is a Siri system, which is plagued by malfunctions and issues. We're, and, we, we are recommending that that be replaced with a more reliable and energy-efficient streetlight system, whether it's LED or other current technology that, that's yet to be evaluated. And also explore the installation of decorative light standards in the neighborhood as desired by residents. The park, Earl, at Earl and Glenview, recommending that the Crestmore Canyon, the fire damaged portion of that, be replanted with native species. Also recommending that the park be replaced, and that we explore a possible expansion of the park based upon input and feedback from the community. And we'll be convening this process to continue to gather this input from the residents in a, um, community meeting that's currently scheduled for January 26th. The other issue that, um, we looked into based upon council's direction and feedback from the community was the feasibility of undergrounding the overhead utilities in the neighborhood. So, we engaged an electrical utility engineering consultant to perform a feasibility analysis. And the results of that analysis are that while commendable in theory, undergrounding the utilities in the neighborhood does have many feasibility challenges. Their result, um, resulting conclusion is that if it doesn't have to be performed, they do not recommend that it be performed. Among the many challenges are listed here, additional land rights that are required in the front yards, um, new service locations on the side yards that require tearing up and, um, then replacing hardscape and landscape along the sides of houses as well as new, um, points of services, possible upgrades of wiring and cabling within the houses, and the cost is fairly substantial at about 11.2 million is what they're estimating. We will present the results of this feasibility analysis and the recommendations to the public at the community meeting in January, 'cause I know there's been some interest from the community. These are just some examples of some of those issues that were presented at the study session. In terms of the overall cost for the recommended projects that I just went through, uh, we're currently estimating that they're gonna range somewhere between nine and 11 million dollars for hard construction costs, and probably in the neighborhood of another million dollars or so for soft costs, including design and construction administration. And just one thing to remember is that these costs are, um, construction costs. They are planning-level estimates based upon preliminary study, not even, um, preliminary engineering at, at this point in time. And lo, it's likely that, given the, um, feedback that we'll get from the community as well as development of the plans and as issues come up, that these costs will probably be subject to change. In terms of schedule, discussed this a little bit, um, briefly earlier, the sewer is currently in construction, the Phase 1 sewer. The Phase 1 water is, will be awarded, will be coming back to council for award sometime in late January. That'll go into construction in the February to April timeframe. And then we're anticipating that the first phase of, I, I call Phase 2 improvements, but it's the first phase of these improvements that we described here tonight, will occur during this next year's construction season, May through October. To date, we've been focusing mostly on the what. Uh, we haven't really been focusing on the how and when in terms of phasing and minimizing impacts to the neighborhood. That's our next step, is to really look at, does it make sense to go in and do all of the sewer in the entire neighborhood, or should we do a portion of it so that we don't impact the entire neighborhood at once? In terms of public outreach and input, like I said, we're, um, scheduled a community meeting for this coming January 26th. We're currently working on a website for the Crestmore Reconstruction, and that's expected to go live before the end of the year. That website will, um, include not only project updates, but also be an avenue to garner feedback and input from the residents, talk about upcoming meetings, uh, as we have projects in construction, put construction schedules and some of those impacts so that we can notify residents of, of what's happening out there. And then the park reconstruction, we, as, as I discussed earlier, that at the, um, January 26th meeting, we will be, um, discussing the park, and that's a continuation of your direction, the council's direction, to engage the public in the park redesign efforts. So, the, um, requested action for tonight is that council adopt a resolution confirming the scope of the infrastructure repairs and improvements related to the Crestmore neighborhood. And with that, I will turn it over to questions and comments.
Any questions of Harry? Ken?
Through the chair. Harry, I know you mentioned, uh, the, the replanting of the, of the canyon in that area. Are we doing everything that we could possibly do to protect that canyon and foresee, you know, erosion and any other drainage problems, or any, uh, even, I guess, fire safety issues?
Yeah. No, no, that's, that's-
Are we doing everything we can?
Yeah. And that's an excellent question. We've had the geotechnical engineer who, um, did the recommendations for the slope repair out there come back out very recently and look at the canyon and confirm their, their previous, um, recommendations or conclusions, which were the slope stability work and erosion control work that has been done to date is adequate from a geotechnical standpoint. They, they do not have erosion control concerns, um, for this winter. Any replanting, um, they don't even recom, it's not that they don't recommend, but, but they don't recommend that the planting occur for slope stability and erosion control reasons. So, they're, they're, they feel very comfortable that, um, the existing conditions out there are adequate. From a purely erosion control, um, standpoint. Obviously, an aesthetic improvement would be to replant that canyon.
Okay.
Okay. Michael?
I wanted to, um, get a little clarification on what this particular action is, is doing. So, if we approve this, the way it's written, the resolution, the way it's written right now- now, are we approving the expenditure from the trust fund and also making a commitment to these projects and the timeline? Or is it just a commitment to the scope? Can you clarify what exactly we're doing?
If the city council acts to adopt the resolution tonight, you would be making, you would be confirming the direction that the city council provided at the study session a month ago, which was to proceed with the scope of the project as outlined in the report tonight. The reason that we're seeking a specific action is that there is a great deal of work and time associated with the design and development of the projects in order that we could meet a reasonable construction schedule, as Harry outlined, for construction this next dry weather season in the spring and summer months. In essence, we, based on your action tonight, we would, assuming the city council adopts the resolution, we would proceed with design and project development. We would return to the city council on the schedule that Harry has outlined for you with additional action to award contracts and to proceed into actual construction. So I think that that's sort of a long way of saying, if you don't want us to do it, it would be better if you told us now. If you adopt the resolution, we will take that as your direction to proceed. That said, you will not be immediately or directly obligating any expenditures, except as those will come forward to you subsequently, for design contracts and for construction contracts. But I would say again, that it would be, we would be heading off on a stray tangent if it's not the city council's intent, at least, to proceed into actual contracts for design and construction.
Okay. And I am very much in favor of moving forward in this direction, but during the study session, I believe both council member Medina and I asked the question as to what would be the impact to other city projects if we were to proceed, and I don't think that that was addressed yet. And so my concern would be that if there were, say, other hotspots in the city that needed attention, how would then we be able to adjust our priorities over doing things? And of course, in this instance, we absolutely want to repair the damaged area, but the additional work that we're proposing is then, do we have an opportunity, an opportunity later to reprioritize if we find that other areas of the city are in urgent need of those repairs that would require the same resources?
You do, and I appreciate your clarifying the question. You always have the ability to reprioritize and to, or, as I said before, to direct subsequently that work you previously intended should not be done. I would indicate, first of all, that literally ever since the explosion of the fire, the city staff has continuously been under the press of an extraordinarily expanded workload to deal with not just the planning and development of the infrastructure construction, repair projects, but the very, very large number of explosion and recovery-related issues. And it is directly the reason that we've brought Harry Burrows on as a contract employee to manage the workload associated with the Glenview reconstruction. It is, to the extent necessary, it is our intent to continue to advise the city council where there is a need to provide additional resources in order to allow the concurrent continuation of city council priorities. But I do understand the council's comment and question, and I think it is an important topic for us to take up in a more broad-based discussion over the next couple of months, so that in essence, we can develop an appropriate strategy for getting all of these things done at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Any other questions, comments? We've been looking forward to this for a long time. I know it just takes time, unfortunately, it can't get done soon enough, but I think tonight, hopefully with the passage of this resolution, we'll establish the parameters to actually put some shovels in the ground and get it rebuilt. We're looking forward to it. So action by the city council?
Through the chair, Mayor. I'd like to introduce the resolution, but I also like to thank Harry Burrows for all his work. We are, in essence, rebuilding the community. And so with that, I'd like to introduce...
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing establishment of a Rebuild It Green incentive program for Crestmore-Glenview area homes, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Gillaran Energy Management in a amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars for green building energy consultation.
Thank you, and good evening once again. As you stated, there's basically two things before you on this item. A is the establishment of a green building grant program for the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood, and B is a consulting contract related to the technical aspects of implementation of that grant. I'll give some of, before turning it over to Tony Rozzi, a associate planner with our department, I'll give some of the background on sustainability in San Bruno, as well as in the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood. So as the council knows, the pipeline that exploded on September ninth was a natural gas pipeline. And natural gas is both a finite resource that provides energy to businesses and homes, but is also one that pollutes on both the local and global level. And given it's a finite resource, it's not sustainable to rely on that for the long term. So with that in mind, and other sustainability practices in mind, the council adopted a number of sustainable policies within the general plan and other policy documents. And some of these were related to green building. And as the council knows, the first implementation of our green building policies was the adoption of the Green Building Code earlier this year, on January first of this year. And in fact, the council decided to adopt Tier One of these Green Building Codes, which requires slightly more sustainable practices for building new homes. And green building is a broad term, but what it basically means is you build your home with conservation in mind, with efficiency in mind, and in some cases, with production of onsite energy in mind, so solar panels and things of that nature. As the council also knows, a majority of homeowners in the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood are rebuilding, and a number of these homeowners have expressed an interest in rebuilding green. About a month after the fire occurred, a well-known nonprofit called Global Green approached the city with the idea of rebuilding these homes in a more sustainable way. And they got a grant from Silicon Valley Foundation for a hundred thousand dollars to begin development of a green building incentive grant program for these homeowners within the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood. Along the way, we were keeping PG&E in the loop about the cost of this program, and this initially came in, the initial costs were quite high, and therefore PG&E asked us to work with Global Green to reduce those total costs. In the end, because of a number, for a number of reasons, mostly the cost, as well as how the grants would be given to the homeowners, we had to terminate our relationship with Global Green. Unfortunately, at that time, PG&E told us that they could no longer financially support the program because the program was contingent on Global Green's involvement. Given the homeowner interest in rebuilding green and developing a grant program, staff has continued to work on this and has developed this grant program for the city council's consideration. Gillaran Energy Management is a company that was initially working under Global Green. They've had established connections with a number of homeowners already, and have done an excellent job in making recommendations to rebuild green. So those are the two items that are before you tonight, and I'll turn this over now to Tony Rozzi to go over what the green building grant program entails, as well as Gillaran Energy Management details.
Good evening. Try and be brief and non-technical. But what I do want to cover is just the proposed program, and then how the proposed scope of services by Gillaran Energy Management are envisioned currently. In essence, Rebuild It Green would be a technical assistance program for homeowners. It would provide green building expertise by Gillaran Energy Management, as well as onsite construction, trouble tasking, any issues that come up. Gillaran Energy Management would be available to resolve if it was green building related. And then the Rebuild It Green program would also offer a grant for rebuilding with sustainable The typical energy efficiency upgrades for homes, when you think about sustainability, relate to a couple of different things. You've got an efficiency component, and you have a materials component. On the material side, it's sourcing sustainable woods, cabinetry that doesn't off-gas, things that improve the indoor air quality. And on the energy efficiency side, you have techniques that improve the performance of a home related to how much natural gas or electricity they require. With the Rebuild It Green program as proposed, we would be recommending improvements to things like insulation, windows that are double glazed or triple glazed, heating and cooling equipment that's very efficient, as well as the potential for solar photovoltaics. If the homeowner chooses to participate, the idea is that the program wouldn't delay construction, wouldn't delay the process, and that it would really empower the homeowners and their construction team to make the right choices that make sense from a green building perspective. So kind of a custom-fit program for individual homeowners that have been affected. At this point, it's been designed to help any of the homeowners that lost their home as part of the explosion, so the thirty-eight, thirty-nine homes that were completely destroyed. In order to qualify for the program, staff's recommending that any home that's built and performs thirty-five percent more efficient than the standard home built in California would qualify for a base grant of twenty-five thousand dollars. I guess, put another way, if the home uses thirty-five percent less energy than a standard code-built home in California, they would qualify for the grant. The way we'd measure this thirty-five percent threshold is using something called a Title Twenty-four analysis, and it's a fairly standard report that all building permits are required to submit upon application. And what it does is it measures the proposed energy use of the home, and the types of materials that they would be using related to insulation and heating/cooling equipment, and basically gives you a baseline understanding of how much energy that home would use. So the Title Twenty-four would say, this home uses twenty percent less energy than a typical home in California. And what we'd like homeowners to do is design their home to be thirty-five percent more efficient, use thirty-five percent less energy than a standard home in California. The Rebuild It Green program would make recommendations that make that thirty-five percent threshold possible. And the reason thirty-five percent keeps getting repeated by me is it serves as a really good baseline parameter for not only statewide grants that are available for new homes that add solar, but also it serves as a really good efficiency, baseline efficiency if a home decides to add solar to their property. I think it's important to note that the way that the Rebuild It Green program has been proposed, it would be three tiers. And you'd have a base grant proposal, thirty-five, if you just designed a home at thirty-five percent efficiency, you'd be eligible for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. If the homeowners decided to add solar to that, to their home, they'd be eligible for additional grant monies. Fifty percent of all of the home's energy needs provided by solar would qualify them for a maximum grant of forty-five thousand dollars. And if a homeowner decided to provide a hundred percent of their energy needs, they'd qualify for a sixty-five thousand dollar grant. A number of homeowners have expressed really deep interest and connection to green building, and so the Rebuild It Green program has also proposed something called a green building bonus. What that would do is offer an additional ten thousand dollar grant if the home was LEED certified. And LEED certification, if you're not familiar with it, is sort of the industry green building standard nationwide, and it's a fairly in-depth application process and requires fairly substantial improvements to both the indoor air quality of the home, but also the way the home performs on an energy level. And so staff's proposing that that be an additional incentive if homeowners so choose to take it. All those grants, if a home were to build and meet the thirty-five percent threshold and add a hundred percent of their energy needs via solar, and become LEED certified, you'd be eligible for a maximum grant of seventy-five thousand dollars. There's a couple issues I want to cover as far as verification and participation, just real briefly. Gillaran Energy Management would be our boots on the ground for verification of these measures, as well as appropriate participation in the program, and, as I mentioned, be available for troubleshooting. Homeowners' participation would be a fairly simple process, where we would enter into some type of memorandum of understanding, just to let the homeowners understand the work plan, the efficiency upgrades that are going to be expected by their architect and contractor, as well as give them a really clear understanding of the reimbursement schedule for the grant program. Staff's currently proposing that fifty percent of whatever grant they're aiming to qualify for is provided at the beginning of the project, sort of to cover those upfront costs, and fifty percent would be covered, or fifty, the remaining fifty percent would be retained until all the green building construction was complete. Staff's estimating that thirty homes may participate in the Rebuild It Green program. Of those thirty homes, perhaps ten may choose to add solar, and of the thirty homes, we're estimating that five homes may pursue some type of LEED certification. Total cost impact of the Rebuild It Green program is just over one million dollars, if you consider all of the eligible grants possible for thirty homes participating. And there is an attached budget in the staff report, I'm happy to dig into that if you have any questions. Gillaran Energy Management would be our partner in this project, they would serve as staff extension, working under the direction of the committee of development director to administer the verification side, but also really to provide design expertise and be available for onsite meetings, and meet with interested homeowners, architects, contractors onsite or within City Hall. If LEED certification was desired, it's a fairly in-depth process, Gillaran Energy Management has a team that is well-versed, they've got twenty-plus years of experience doing specifically green building, design, and verification. And then really, they'd also provide any additional services needed related to green building. Cost impact for Gillaran Energy Management's scope proposed would be just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that would cover thirty homes participating and in-depth participation by Gillaran Energy Management in all thirty of those homes, design and development. Total cost of the proposed Rebuild It Green program and the Gillaran Energy Management scope is just over one point two million dollars, and this would be the cost impact on the city's trust. That's hopefully a brief summary, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to the program.
Any questions for Tony? It was brief and not too technical, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I do.
Irene.
Thank you. I understood what you said, and I appreciate the brief and not too technical. I have a question about why there's not more interest from the homeowners and more maybe push from us or you about people adding solar. I understand the other pieces about the design and all that, if you are working on sustainability with construction, materials and cabinets and all those kinds of things. But to add solar doesn't seem to be that kind of a design problem, but I don't know. So that's my question. And if it's not a design problem, what can we do to encourage more people to add that to their list?
So I believe what it is, is the solar panel aspect of it is just another hurdle for people to get over, and there's a lot of people that want to move in their homes right away. So doing some of these revised Title 24 calculations to build in, to get them up to 35%, might not take quite as long as if you add solar panels as well. So I think it's just the timing aspect. There may be more interest in the end, and if it was, you know, the council's suggestion, we could promote that angle a bit more. There's, as Tony mentioned, there's basically two things you want to do. First, you want to aim at conserving energy, and that's getting people up to 35%. And once you conserve that energy, then you could focus on producing energy within a home that then won't waste it. So yeah, I mean, that could be something that staff focuses on more if that's what the council wishes.
Excuse me, before we move on, I still don't understand the design part because if you have a home now and it has a roof on it, you can add solar paneling. I know there's connections and you have to do this and that, but you live in your home anyway, so explain that part to me.
Yeah, it's just something that we've, it's just based on our conversations that we've had with the residents so far, that's where the interest has been, has been at the 35% level and not at the solar panel level. We haven't really dived into it with people, asking them exactly why they're not as interested in it. My guess is that it's part, you know, part of it is a psychological thing of having to do one thing extra of getting into your home, and that they just don't want that additional hurdle. But I can't speak for all of the homeowners, but that's just been, from talking from the homeowners so far, more people have been interested in that 35% than have been interested in the solar panel aspect.
But I'm sorry, you still haven't answered my question. If you can, if you can live in your house now
Yeah.
And add solar paneling, why can't the people build their house, get the things in, and add solar paneling? Why is there, would there, why would there be a delay in getting into your home?
Yeah, I don't think there would be a delay.
Okay, so...
Let me just, let me just see here. If you're asking, so this is an incentive program.
No, I understand.
And if the interest is to provide, to get more solar, then perhaps it's an issue of providing a higher level of incentive or something. It's clearly, I don't think the director immediately understood, there's no, you're not going to delay somebody getting into their home, but for whatever reason, we're not experiencing this high level of interest from homeowners to go to that level. Maybe it's an incentive issue, maybe it's a complexity issue. I'm not sure we know what it is, but we could certainly explore that further with some of our homeowners and try and figure that out.
Okay.
Does that answer the question or not?
Not really. Let me divide it up. Is there a design issue for someone building a new home if they say, "Oh, solar, okay"? What is, why would adding solar cause anyone to delay getting into their home? Or is it a perception on the part of the homeowners? And if it is a perception on the part of the homeowners, I for one, I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do, I for one think we should work really hard in getting over that perception and explaining that solar is whatever, I mean, how, whatever it is, which you haven't said yet.
Well, maybe it's just a cost issue.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, part of it is that when you're rebuilding a home, it's pretty easy to wire the home up and then put the solar panels on top. So I think part of it is just a perception thing. So I think we could work harder as staff to get people over that perception, that there could be any delay, and promote the solar panel aspect of this more than we have.
And I was jumping ahead and thinking, if it's a cost issue, then we might want to relook at the incentives as well. But clearly, it may be something that we need to look at more carefully because I'm not sure we know precisely, and we haven't really tested that in detail with our conversations with homeowners. Is that correct?
To some degree, we have, but we haven't fully promoted the solar panel aspect of it, and we could promote that aspect of it more and, you know, educate people that, hey, there won't be a delay. These are the things you could do, you know, to build solar panels into your home from the start.
Okay. I would for one like us to do that and do it in such a way that it doesn't cause more delay, just you don't need to come back to the council and cause another month of delay since we won't be meeting again in December, so.
Absolutely.
That's my question so far.
Okay. Any other questions?
To the chair. First, let me welcome back Mr. Rossi. It's good to see you. Good presentation. I should just clarify, I am designing my first home after, with this new, with this new code. And after 28 years, now I am having to relearn your Title 24. Title 24 prior to green building code was a compliance issue. It was windows, a certain U-value, a certain amount of insulation, and building inspector comes in and inspects it, and you're good. Now we're a lot more complicated, and I think it's good that we have this consultant on hand. And in answer to my colleague's question is that, yes, I think this consultant should go over all the possibilities with these new homeowners, these hopefully 30 homeowners, you know, in their planning. But I do believe it is, with my experience, it is a cost issue. We're talking about a base system of about $25,000. And my experience with working with some of these tragic residents is that they're trying to determine where they're going to put their money in their new home. And even though they're going to get what ultimately is going to be a nice, really nice, hopefully a dream home, they're not, they're going to have to cut some corners. And it's nice to have these incentives. So I guess back to your, since this is a city-sponsored grant program now with money from, I guess from the trust fund, can you tell me, based on, I believe there's about 11 homes that have applied and everything, are they able to achieve the 35% fairly easily? Because that's a big number. When you're talking about homes that were designed prior to green building code that were, I guess are at a zero base, now we're telling them, you know, everybody else is at 15% with the new code, and we're asking them to go another 20%. Where are they getting that?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. So let me add a couple of things that hopefully will help clarify. Like Aaron mentioned in his presentation, build a new, if you build a new home in San Bruno, you already need to comply with the CalGreen Tier 1. So you're performing 15% better than an existing new home anywhere else in California that's not under Tier 1. So asking them to jump another 20% that gap is really what the grant program is meant to help resolve for homeowners that are interested in the program. So there's a number of incremental costs related to not just the purchase, but the design, the coordination time. And for homeowners that want to participate, who are under construction, it does depend on how far they are along in construction, whether it's easy or difficult to meet that 35% threshold. If your walls are still open and you haven't put sheet rock up, there's a lot of flexibility in the type of insulation you use that can help improve your energy efficiency. If you haven't purchased your furnace or your water heater yet, also quite a bit of flexibility in making sure you get an efficient furnace that gives you those points in that Title 24 analysis report. The Pellegrinis are here tonight. They've, were fairly far along in construction and have been really interested in the program and making the program work for them. And it certainly required some re-managing of the type of insulation they're going to use and the things that are, that are going to help them meet the 35%. But one of the other big benefits is Gillaran Energy Management provides these specialized inspections called HERS inspections. And they go out and make sure that your insulation is done above and beyond code, that your new furnace system doesn't leak, that it exceeds the standard building code. And all those things give you points in the Title 24. So for a number of homes, getting that 35% looks like really high-quality heat retentive, or heat pretentiive insulation, high-quality windows, a very efficient furnace, and a very efficient, most likely tankless water heater. And then with those HERS inspections, they're exceeding the code, or exceeding the program requirements. So that gives them a lot of flexibility to qualify, so.
Okay. So I guess the next question is, is that a $25,000 grant, you know, which is probably the majority of the residents will be shooting for, and it sounds as if the Pellegrinis are, aren't maybe not there, but they're, they hope to be there at the 35%?
Well, certainly they are, yeah.
What did that cost them?
I can't speak...
I mean, are they, I mean, are they spending $50,000 more to get a $25,000 grant, or are they recouping, you know, the investment, you know, with that grant?
We sat down with Gillaran and tried to make this cost-neutral. So of course, it's going to depend on the size of the home, you know, what the design of your home is, but in general, we aim to have that $25,000 cover all the costs associated going, from going to that 35%.
And I guess my last question is, if we do, and my clients are considering solar panels. And I guess the only design issue is trying to get as many solar panels as you can based on the exposure. In your knowledge of, in your understanding of this program, would solar panels just be a no-brainer and get you over the 35% almost alone?
So the solar panel, the solar panels themselves are a fairly substantial sustainability feature of a new home. The Title 24 report is sort of quirky in that it really just wants to calculate the efficiency of your insulation and your furnace and your windows, and it doesn't really look into where your energy comes from. So meeting the 35% threshold is really that first step, and then saying, hey, we also think solar panels make a lot of sense, and the grant of $45,000 or $65,000 should be, like Aaron mentioned, cost-neutral in covering that. And yes, the hope is it becomes a no-brainer for homeowners to do it.
Okay. So in your recommendation now is that if a homeowner has a design and hasn't started construction, this is the opportune time for them to talk to the consultant and go over what measures they can take?
Yeah, absolutely. The earlier the better.
Rico?
Thank you. Very quick, I know we're talking about a potential 1.2 million, and it is anticipated to utilize the trust, but I don't believe that that is a guarantee, even though it seems it should be, because in your first report, the director mentioned it was global green, PG&E wanted that, it was conditional. I want to commend the staff in the sense that there was high administrative costs, and you were diligent in looking at that, and also having ownership and us having the ability to be a part of the process and signing off, and I think that's commendable for you looking out for that, and I think this is a better option. But with that said, if this resolution passes, I would, I would ask, or suggestion to my colleagues, is that this go forward, once the city manager has maybe reached out to review this expenditure with the trust for verification for it to be utilized. And that's to the manager, if she has any thought on that.
So I'm sorry, reach out to who?
Anybody you'd like. No, no. Aaron.
To the trustee?
Yes, the trustee, just for verification that these funds can be utilized for this. Since obviously there was a concern with global green, with PG&E, they had to have them, and they didn't, for whatever reasons, we felt otherwise because of the administrative and oversight.
So I will give you some preliminary comments and then ask the city attorney to weigh in. The way the trust is set up and the way it's being utilized and the specific language in the trust does not require the trustee to pre-approve or to render an opinion about whether an expenditure properly conforms to the detailed language of the trust. The trust is deliberately, flexibly, and broadly constructed in order that the city has the ability to take the necessary actions and make the necessary expenditures to, in the city's opinion, properly rebuild and restore the community as in the aftermath and from the effects of the explosion and fire. The trustee has, to date, participated by reviewing expenditures and evaluating that they have been properly documented and that they conform to the intent of the trust after the fact. So I think what you hear me expressing is a little bit of hesitancy about going down a path that says the trustee will make those determinations as opposed to the city making those determinations.
That's not what I'm referencing.
Perhaps I could...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry about that. So I think this is, this program is akin to the program that, there are several programs the city's already implemented to waive building permit fees and so on, and then recoup those monies from the trust. That's really the same thing as a grant program essentially to the residents. So in that situation, what the city did is present those expenses to the trust with a certification that they are not covered by insurance and otherwise meet the terms of the trust, and on that authority, the trustee has authorized the distribution. And that's the way the trust has been set up to operate. So I don't see these, the grant program really is any different as a waiver of a fee program that's already been approved.
And the only reason I bring this up, and I understand the way it's worked, was just only because in the initial report, it was that we needed to use global green, that's what PG&E said. We've chosen a different path. So I'm a trust-but-verify person, and so that's what I just want to make sure. If we're being, if I'm being told by the city manager and city attorney, it meets the qualifications and therefore it will be granted by the trustee, then, then fine. But that's why I'm asking.
Any other comments? Michael?
To the chair. One point I wanted to add on to Councilor Connell's suggestion about the solar panels, I think it's a good idea to try to push as much as we can. In the end, I do think that it would be a huge benefit to the homeowners. So one thing I would suggest that we also look at is maybe building into the requirement for the grants that they not necessarily use panels, but make sure that the infrastructure is in place. And I think that that might be a much lower cost, lower impact requirement that would clear a huge hurdle if they were to add the solar panels sometime down the road. The other comment I wanted to make is that it appears from what I'm seeing that the contractor that we're, that's going to do most of the legwork here, won't be administering the grants, and that I assume is going to fall on your department, Aaron.
The city manager.
Okay. Okay. And I noticed that there wasn't any cost associated with that administration or an estimate of how much time it would take, what percentage of an FTE would be allocated to that. It might be good if we figure that out and make sure that that's also compensated at some point.
Absolutely, that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Irene?
Thank you. I appreciate your comment about the solar, the infrastructure for that. My only concern is, or not a concern, but then if we do that, which is a fine idea, then do we also extend the time that the grant could be administered? So say they build the house, they've got the... So say, they build the house, they've got the infrastructure, and then six months later, they say, okay, we do want to put the solar paneling in. Would they still be eligible for the grant? I don't want to take it away from them if they're just, you know, if it's six months or a year down the road. Is there a, I didn't notice one, but is there a time that they can no longer apply for the grant if the house is already built? Or should we put that in there, that they have up to a year to add the solar panels or something like that?
We could have that. I had not thought of that angle before. Well, we had assumed that they would no longer be eligible for grant funds once they received their final approval of their building permit. So once they move into their home, and there's no longer an active building permit.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know that's what I'm saying.
You know, you're cackling. So I think we should add some time for it. Can we add up to a year?
I'm sure we could, we definitely could build that into the program guidelines.
I think that would be reasonable.
Anyone else?
I think, well, caveat to that is that, do we have, is there an ordinance for the Glenview area as far as taking advantage of the services that they're receiving now, which is no payment of fees and things?
We do, we do have a time limit on it. I believe it's five years within the master fee schedule. So, I mean, we could take that into consideration, too. But the solar, so if it was adding solar panels later, the building permit fee associated with it, it's a pretty small, I think it's, we limit to $125 or something.
Yeah, because if you have a five-year limit on someone building their home, and then, you know, not, you know, and then recouping building fees or whatever, that's still going to, you're going to have to have, you know, some reserve in the trust, you know, to compensate for that.
Okay.
As long as they're the same owner.
Anything else? Just two quick comments. You mentioned about trying to be cost-neutral. You're talking about cost-neutral right at the onset, right? And you haven't mentioned the, what are going to be huge savings in energy efficiency over the long period of time.
Cost-neutral from a short-term standpoint. Long-term, it's a net positive for the homeowner, absolutely.
Very net positive. The other thing is, when you talked about the trust paying for this, or the trust, you know, qualifying this particular thing, I can't think of any other organization off the top of my head that that's acting like PG&E as far as trying to get energy efficiency out there and offering their own programs. So I can't see where there's any issue with that, with that trust paying for that.
And that's the reason why solar has slowed, is because the incentives aren't out there.
Yeah, a lot of the state.
And PG&E was leading the way on that.
Right.
Many energy efficiencies.
Okay, great. So do you need an introduction to the resolution?
We need that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Any changes that you want to add in?
Oh, excuse me, including the infrastructure part and the extended for a year, they could be eligible for up to a year to add on the solar panels? Or I guess anything?
Say it again?
If we include putting in the infrastructure for the solar panels, but not necessarily purchasing the solar panels, then we need to add the year, at least a year. But is there, you know, extension to apply for the grants, right?
For the solar panel aspect of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Should we add, should it just be up to a year? And there might be other things that they could add later?
Why wouldn't it be any, why wouldn't be anything within the grant, you know, to qualify with the grant, whether it's solar panels or tankless water heaters or whatever? There might, there might be someone that builds a home that didn't get the grant, didn't reach thirty-five percent, and then
And then changes.
A year later, a year later, they take some certain measures that gets them at least to thirty-five percent, then they would probably qualify for twenty-five.
Right, exactly. So don't, no, don't limit it to the solar panels, anything within a year of construction or within pulling the permit.
Do we have any issue with that extension?
From a practical standpoint, the solar panels are the ones that probably make the most sense to allow that extension.
Yeah, the rest is going to be done.
Because mostly, the rest of the Title 24 calculations, that really goes into things that after you sheet rock, it's really difficult to do.
Oh, okay.
So our recommendation would most likely be just isolate that extension to the solar panel aspect of it, because that's something you could just put on your roof later easily.
Okay. And you could, we can always come back and revisit this if something comes up.
Correct.
Okay, I'll do that. So that, Carol, sorry. So we're, we're adding the infrastructure for, allowing for the infrastructure for the solar paneling and putting in a year extension for applying for the grant for installing solar panels. And with that, I'll introduce the resolution.
You're introducing two resolutions.
One resolution.
Are you going to do one at a time?
Oh, okay. All right. There's two.
Yes, one at a time.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And then I'll introduce the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Gillaran Energy Management for Green Building Consultation.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. At this point in time, I'd like to break from the regular conduct of business and ask our presenter for the annual report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name's Eric Wood. I am the chairman of the Traffic Safety Parking Committee. This is our report for 2010, 2011. For everything that was going on, we actually had a really productive year, I think. We had fifty-three residents show up, which I think is still a lot of people. We were able to really, this was the first year that the traffic toolkit was actually implemented and in place. And you'll see later on that we've actually been able to apply it, and it's actually been, I think, quite helpful for the residents. One of the first things that we addressed was the Hundred Block of Linden, and we ended up installing radar-enforced plates in each direction, and then on San Felipe to reinforce the 25-mile speed limit. We noticed in San Bruno, I mean, and it's just the way that it was built, the streets are smaller, and the main issue that we address is speed. So you'll see that a lot of the things that we address in our council have to do with speed, you know, community people coming and saying, they're driving too fast down our street. I'm like, well, everybody drives fast down the street. So the traffic calming toolkit has actually been very helpful in implementing these things. So you'll see as we kind of go along. The next item, the next one that we addressed was the Two Hundred Block of Acacia. And the nice thing about these is the residents get to come and have a voice. So this one, there was really nothing that we could do. So it's nice because we have a police officer sitting on the committee, and they then increased enforcement. And we have yet to hear from anyone in that area, so it's nice. Then we had the Five Hundred Block of Elm. Again, it was the same thing. We ended up doing just more police enforcement. But again, it's nice that as a resident, you get to come and speak and have someone listen, and then we can actually make a recommendation, and a lot of these times, they get done fairly The next one is a longer term. It has to do with the San Bruno Post Office and the circulation. So the nice thing on this is the postmaster has actually requested funds because he doesn't want a short-term solution, he wants a long-term solution. And it was really nice because we were able to, as a committee, talk about it and come up with a longer-term solution versus a shorter term. Because as we know, everybody, after they leave, they all try to go left, and it just doesn't work. The next one is the intersection at Genevin and Linden. We actually had two meetings on this. We were trying to come up with the right solution, and there isn't one for this intersection. It's nice because we had not just residents come, but we had business owners come in that whole area. So what we recommended, and I believe you guys approved, was to put in, in the intersection there, keep clear, and then we are going to have them put the paddles about the walking. So it's like anything that we could do to think of to help for that, for these intersections, we've been trying to do, and be very creative and listen. So that's kind of one of the nice things about what we're doing. The next thing is the Blue Zone at 715 Fourth Avenue. So this was our first denial that came before the council, and we agreed with it, the denial. And it was just one person that wanted a handicap in front of his house. And again, we walked through the whole thing, he paid for the appeal, and we agreed, and it didn't come before you guys. The next one was the Red Zone at 80 Bay Shore. And, how was this one? On this one, the recommendation from the staff, we actually ended up changing it and kind of making it a little bit shorter and better. The next one was on Atlantic between San Mateo and Montgomery. Yeah, this was the one that was actually requested by the fire department, and we approved it, and the work order has been issued. The next one was a two-hour parking. We had, I don't remember how many, but I remember we had the Chamber of Commerce come, we had business owners come, we had residents come. So we listened to them all, but then agreed with them and changed it to two hours. Then the last major one, we actually, we had three separate meetings on this. It had to do with Caltrains and moving their parking lot further south, and the residents were really concerned that it was going to impact their parking. So after three meetings, and I don't know how many hours from staff, thank you, we found out that the peak parking was after five o'clock. So it wasn't being impacted, it was actually less impacted by the Caltrain move than it was by the Caltrain move. So we left it as is and made no recommendation. So going forward, we're going to be focusing on the same thing. The really, really nice thing about staff now, I mean, they've really changed things around, and I can't thank them enough, but they give us, I don't know if you guys can see, but they give us sheets, like basically Excel spreadsheets, big, that so we know what's coming up, we know what's on the agenda, we know items that, you know, people that have come and put in requests about. So we are as informed as they are, and it really, really helps us. So we like to thank Clara and Tina for putting all this together. That's where we're at. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Rico?
Through the chair. And just very quickly, maybe it goes to staff. On the Genevin and Linden, is there a timeline for that? Because I had learned, obviously, that we don't have a particular product that we need in order to go forward on that task. So do we know when we're going to get that in to be able to perform that work order?
I don't have a specific time for you, but I will provide you with that. I will follow up with that information to give you a exact timeframe when everything can be implemented. I know that, keep it clear, clear, the first phase can be implemented very shortly.
Okay, and then once the product comes in, then it can be implemented on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Okay, thanks.
Comments? Irene?
I just, I want to say, this has been the most enthusiastic, delightful, traffic and safety, whatever your whole title, parking, thank you, report that we've ever had. So thanks to Clara and you and your group for not kind of giving up, but examining what you've done and what needed to be done and finding solutions for it. So we really, really appreciate all the hours it takes. It's not easy, so thank you very much.
Right, and also thank you from the entire council for all of your work. The city pretty much runs on staff and volunteers, and so, you know, we can't say enough for your time and efforts. You know, no pun intended, but you're the one committee where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, so.
We don't mind that.
You actually get to see the people and the streets involved and stuff, and it's, you know, you get to see their concerns because it's all local stuff. So thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Mr. Hamilton. Thank you for coming, Mr. Hamilton. All right, item, go back to ten. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a joint-use agreement with the San Bruno Park School District.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Can you hear me? My name is Danielle Brewer. I'm with the Community Services Department. Before you tonight is the updated joint-use agreement with the San Bruno Park School District. This agreement has been in effect for a number of years, with the most recent one being in 2007. This agreement allows the school district and the city to use each other's indoors and outdoor facilities, such as the gym, the parks, the classrooms, the pool, free of charge. It also includes maintenance provisions for Parkside and Bel Air Fields and the maintenance that the city staff does on those fields. All provisions of the, oh, I'm sorry. And it also outlines the payments from the school district to the city for that work. All provisions from the 2007 agreement are incorporated in the updated version before you tonight, including the staff time for maintaining the school district fields. This is a standard relationship that is common between school districts and city agencies as outlined in the education code, authorizing cities and school districts to maintain and operate joint-use indoor and outdoor facilities in order to reduce capital and operational costs and provide recreational areas as a whole. Both the city and the school district recognize this as an important component to the continued collaborative relationship that has been formed to benefit the members of the community of San Bruno. City staff has met with the school district staff a number of times and are in agreement with the new terms in the updated contract. This agreement will be before the school board tomorrow night at their meeting. I would like to highlight a few terms that the agreement has. First, it acknowledges that all enrichment and sports programs offered on the sites after school, many of which we have added since the 2007 agreement went into effect. City staff will continue to work with the school principals to offer programs to the students after school. Second, the agreement acknowledges both permanent and non-permanent improvements that the city has made in the past or will make in the future on the school district property. Examples of the past improvements are the bleachers at the sports field and the scoreboard and lights for Lyons Field that are installed on the school district property. It also recognizes that the city will be making permanent improvements in the future, like the synthetic grass field at Lyons. The installation of the new field will include a small portion of the school district property that has previously been used as part of Lyons Field, as demonstrated in the photo. The red outline is Lyons Field. The line that goes through Lyons Field, the black line that goes through, is actually that portion of the eastmost part of the field is actually school district property that has been used as Lyons Field for many years. So when we do the synthetic field, it will obviously be right there on school district property. Because the updated agreement discusses permanent changes, staff recommends a ten-year term as opposed to a three-year term that has been the practice in the recent past. Finally, the agreement talks about the stipulations if either party wants to end the contract before the expiration date. Under the terms outlined, if the district cancels the contract, the city may remove any of the non-permanent improvements that have been made. Anything not removed will become school district property. And if the school district decides to end the contract before the expiration date, they will pay the city the current value of any of the permanent improvements to the property the city has made at the time of the contract termination at the property value. The timing of this item is not only being driven by the The timing of this item is not only being driven by the expiration of the agreement, but also by the request of awarding the bid for the contractor for Lyons Field, which is the next item on the agenda. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Ken.
So basically, it's a cooperation and then they're just reimbursing our city staff for maintaining the field?
Yes.
But it's a flat fee that stays the same for 10 years. Do we have an issue with whether or not that should have some sort of built-in increase?
It's not a flat fee. The past agreement called for an automatic cost of living adjustment. In this case, it is the flat fee for the first year. Then the city and district will get together and discuss what the increase would be for the following three-year term, and we would look at it continually for the next three years out.
I saw the wrong year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're correct.
But that is a point we definitely discussed and will bring up in future discussions with them.
Good. Questions?
If there's not, and I obviously know that the school district has to approve this, so our approval is also, has to go hand in hand with theirs for tomorrow. But with that, I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Interstate Grading and Paving, Inc. in the amount of $925,844 for the Lyons Field Synthetic Turf Project, approving a construction budget of $1,236,500, appropriating $1,236,500 from Park in Lew fees, and authorizing $10,200 in additional design services to Verde Design, Inc.
In my presentation, I will focus on three issues tonight. First, the purpose of the project. I will take you to the history of this project and then the next steps. To extend the use of the Lyons Field year-round and also to increase the intensity of the use of the field was made the recommendation to replace the natural grass with synthetic grass. During last year, the city council had this item for your consideration twice. First, you approved the inclusion of this project in our CIP budget and allocated $200,000 for the development of the design of the project. And then later, you allocated, you approved the contract for where the design incorporated to develop the design for this project. During this year, 2011, the council acted twice on this item. Late spring, you agreed to allocate $1 million from Park in Lew Fund for the implementation of this project. And later, and also discussed, directed staff to start a process for increasing and accepting donation to be able to fund the project. Later in October, the council agreed to allocate to the project an additional $500,000 and also directed the department to proceed with the project. Considering your direction for the project was assessed the best timing of the implementation of this project. To minimize the impact on the users was the recommendation made by city staff to implement the project during the lowest use of the field during the winter months, during the rainy season, to minimize the risk and the impact implementing this project during the winter months. Special requirements were included in our specification to address the additional risk level involved for the construction of the project during the rainy season, during the winter. In the same time, also was assessed with the user group, the possibility of delay of the project to do some unknown risk having this project under construction during the winter and developing alternative plans, how to accommodate for any possible delay of the project. The department went out with a bid proposal for the project and received four proposals. The lowest responsible bidder was Interstate Grading. Their proposal came back with $925,000 versus 1.326 engineering estimate. Based on the follow-up research of the department, the Interstate Grading and Paving is a well-qualified contractor to be able to build this project based on their prior experience with the same type of project. If the total proposed budget cost then with additional geotechnical services provided during the construction and construction management, the total construction cost and proposed construction budget for this project will be $1.236,000. If you will support this action tonight, then is the intent for the construction to start on the 3rd of January and to have finished construction by the end of April if everything will go according to our plans. Will be an impact to the neighborhood more during the first month of the construction, during the time when the surface layer will be hauled from the site. And that will mean additional traffic on First Street going down on First to San Bruno and then to 101. Also, we intend to have a follow-up, another public meeting on 30th of December advising the neighborhood of the upcoming schedule and the possible impact of the project on their neighborhood. Our recommendation is tonight for you to approve the award of the construction contract to Interstate Grading Incorporated. And both of us, Randy Schwartz, the director for Park and Recreation, and myself, stand for questions.
All right. We've been through this pretty exhaustively the last number of months. Any other questions of staff?
No.
Any action?
I'd love to introduce the resolution.
Okay, and in your introduction, Vice Mayor Ibera, we want to note that the resolution is subject to San Bruno School Board approving the joint use agreement tomorrow evening.
So noted.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10F, adopt a resolution approving an art exhibit policy and authorizing a trial
Good evening, Mayor Ruane, members of the City Council. My name is John Alida. I'm with the Community Services Department and I also serve as staff along with the Community Services Director to the Culture and Arts Commission. The item you're being asked to approve tonight is a resolution approving an art exhibit policy for the city as well as authorization to begin a trial exhibit program. I'll give you some background as to how the idea originated, give you an idea of the process the commission undertook to give you the policy you see in front of you this evening, couple of highlights from the policy, and then a brief overview of the trial program. The commission has become aware over the last couple of years that there is a lack of space within the city to, for local artists to display their work. They've had some requests from the public as well for this kind of space, and so they began to think that this might be a good idea. In May of this year, when they presented their annual report and work plan for the year to council, the idea was mentioned and was received favorably. So they returned to work and began to develop a policy. A subcommittee looked at policies from six other jurisdictions who have similar programs and then created a policy specific to San Bruno. The draft of that policy was approved by the entire commission and is here recommended to you tonight. In terms of the highlights of the policy, there's two I think that are important. One is that it does have a local focus, so the policy specifically is looking for local artists, gives preference to local artists even though other artists may apply. And the policy also does state that the commission will select artwork with content that's suitable for the entire community. Since it will be in a public place, we want to make sure the art is acceptable to all. In terms of the trial program, the library has been selected as the site for a trial program primarily because it is one of the buildings that has the highest amount of public foot traffic and there is available exhibit space there. The staff will work with the artists and the commission to manage the exhibits and the program as well as the exhibits will be advertised in the recreation guide, local cable, our electronic newsletter, and to classes, art classes at the recreation center. The commission, after a trial period, will return to the council and give them a progress report as to how it's going. There's no cost associated with your adoption of the policy and it does involve a minimum of staff time. So the recommendation is that you adopt the resolution approving the policy and then allow the commission to proceed with their trial program.
Any questions?
Through the chair. Well, I think this is a great step forward for the Culture and Arts Commission. Would artists be able to note that their work was for sale or not? Or is it only for display?
We, the city is not going to be any kind of agent for the artists in terms of the items for sale. If someone is interested in a piece of art, we will be able to give them the contact information for the artist and they can discuss any terms with them.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to point out that that was a point of discussion for the commission, something that they looked at closely and is something that is one of the practices in some of the other cities. We thought at least for the trial period, we would not do that and let's just get used to the process of hanging, displaying, advertising the work. It will be in the activity guide so that members of the public will come into the library, see the artwork, and then maybe see some of the other services offered at the library. But at this point, we wouldn't be going for sale. It might be something that we would come back with later on for consideration.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Anything else? All right. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
I would definitely like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10G, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bartle Wells Associates in the amount of $30,000 to conduct a water and wastewater rate study and appropriating $20,000 from the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds to cover the cost of the contract.
The purpose of the action tonight is to seek your approval, to authorize the city manager to execute a consulting contract with Bartle Wells for the financial, to provide us with financial expertise for the development of the rate structure for the sewer and water starts, starting this upcoming July of 2012. The purpose tonight to discuss the award of the contract, to discuss the policy objective, the possible alternative for the rate study itself. You will have ample opportunities for the next three months to have those discussions. As you know very well, the city provides water and sewer services for our residents and is our obligation to manage the system for both. Those services and maintenance and operation of the system is entirely funded by the revenue generated to the rate payer's fees through enterprise funds, sewer and water enterprise fund. In 2009, based on a 10-year financial projection, the city council approved a three-year rate schedule. The last increase of this three-year rate schedule took place 1st of July of this year. As you recall, that last rate increase was 10.16% for sewer and 1175 for water. Was always the city council policy to conduct a holistic and total objective analysis of the financial projection and possible alternative in order for you to set the rate structure to ensure that for the public benefit will be implemented a multi-year rate, a yearly leveled rate, and also as low as possible rate, in the same time meeting the objective of the system for the long-term maintenance of the system. In order for us to be able to meet these set objectives and objectives for the council, the department went out for a request for proposal and received three proposal. And based on our conducted interview, was our conclusion that Bartle Wells is the most qualified to support us with their financial expertise to provide us the support needed for the development of this next financial projection and also the proposed alternative for the rates. If you will support this action tonight and you will authorize the city manager to award the contract to Bartle Wells, then will be our intent to start the discussion with the council, to set those, to rediscover those policy objectives and goals and to schedule. schedule man, subcommittee meetings, probably study session, and to support you with information as, objective available information for you to be able to make a informed decision by March 13th of this year, when the approval of, of, of the notification for Proposition 218 has to be sent out in order for us to have the two reading of the ordinance in May and to have the new rates in place by July of next year. I am open for your questions.
Any questions? Michael?
Just more of a comment than a question, but I would recommend to my colleagues up here that we pursue the option of doing this in-house and maintaining what we have already budgeted rather than extending beyond that. And I think that we know that we're going to have to raise the rates, and I understand that there are considerations that haven't existed before that we need to account for. But at the same time, it also seems that using ratepayer dollars, additional ratepayer dollars, for the purpose of increasing the rates in the current atmosphere that we are, that we're in economically, just, it seems a little insensitive to me, and I would think that in this case, we really should stick to the budget and do the best we can and go with the option where we have the review done of an internal analysis.
Do we have any idea what an internal analysis would cost us?
Initially was our intent, and that's how it was included in our budget, to have a in-house, during the last rate study, was develop a financial model by the consultant and that was transferred, that financial model for our use, and was our intent to update that financial model in-house, and then to have a so-called peer review conducted by somebody from outside. That was the initial intent, how it was included in the budget. That's why it was included 20,000 for the peer review itself, that the work was...
10,000.
10,000, yes, thank you very much. For 10,000, for, for the peer review itself by a financial consultant. What is, what really changed since then, that due to the CD and CDO, those additional requirements set by the baykeepers and the regional board, and those additional set, imposed requirement to include in our financial projection this time, really, this adjustment of that financial model became too complex. And all of us are so submerged in this issue, so close in those issue right now, that was our assessment that having a objective third party, really with a fresh look, a more objective look to update that financial model, making sure that everything is included in that model as, with the most responsible financial intent, that, that really what made to change our plan. And also our, our time, cost money also, this would mean that this consultant could provide us with more support and would require less, still would require our time investment, but certainly less time investment on our part. I didn't make to specifically answer your question, I didn't make a calculation how much would cost if it would be done in-house, but it would be my assessment that the cost would be very close if you are doing in-house, with the difference that you are using your own resources versus having this support provided through outside expertise.
But we could still assume that this, this type of work was, it was planned, and it was budgeted to have the review. I understand that some factors have changed that make it a little, that make it, I don't know, to some extent more complicated to do the analysis. But at the same time, I feel, you know, one of the difficulties of sitting up here is that you do have to balance an understanding of the technical requirements and needs with the needs and the requirements of the rate payers. And in this case, I don't feel that, that the delta in what we're, in what you're proposing is really justified in, in the end result for the rate payers.
Okay, anybody else? Ken?
Can I ask a question, and I asked, my colleague, the subcommittee, was this discussed as far as a, an option of, you know, these two, this added direction, this option of, you know, having it in-house? Because, I mean, he makes a good point, and I think as long as we've got, it looks like we have six months, I mean, it looks like we have some time, and if, you know, possibly we delve into it a little closer and see, you know, maybe we save $10,000, maybe we save $15,000.
There has been no subcommittee review of this. The director's reference to subcommittee review was as we get further down into the process, and we have some content in which to brief a subcommittee in advance of bringing this to the city council. And I would, I would just make sure that the council understands that our timeline is actually very short. There is, all of this work needs to be done prior to March, at which time...
13.
Pardon me?
March 13.
No later than March 13th, according to the, it needs to be at the city council by March 13th in order that we can meet the noticing requirements under Proposition 218 in order to bring you back a, an action item to put a rate into effect that would be implemented as of July. So, I just want to make sure you, that there's no confusion about the schedule and the time that we have in order to accomplish the work.
Through the chair.
Irene.
Oh, I'm sorry. The expertise that we're proposing to hire, what, what additional expertise, I should put it that way, what additional expertise will this company bring to us that we don't have in-house, besides the fact that you guys are already loaded work anyway?
This consultant, they are setting rates, helping and supporting, setting these utility rates in the whole Bay Area. They are supporting other agencies. They have the expertise and the experience updating those and building that, those long-term financial models. They are more expedient, doing this on ongoing basis, that is their business, that's what they do, that means takes them less time, and they are more efficient doing it versus us doing this, just, not us, the daily course of business, but take us more time to be able to update the model, to work with the model, to make the model to work, and certainly the quality of the final product, what you will see is, in my assumption, will be more reliable and better if you will have a expertise of this level for us, to support us through this process, even, even more so considering the timing, when this new rate notification process will have to start in March.
Comment, I appreciate the council member's concern, because I have the same concern. I mean, you know, you do it in-house, you keep subbing it out, and I guess the issue for me is that, is it a push? In other words, is it going to cost us 20,000 or 30,000 bucks internally and in turn take staff away from other things? We brought this up a little earlier on the Glenview issue, if, if, you know, staff's going to be busy working up there doing some things, and how much time is it going to take away if we, if we have another hotspot, I think it was called, in the city. So while I understand, you know, there's some concern, and why can't we do it internally, I think we're fairly well strapped. And to, to sit back and have an independent firm look at it with, with an open eye that maybe we wouldn't have completely, and that has experience to give the, you know, the information to us as to, as to what we're doing as compared to other cities, and how that fits into our rate structure too, I think is valuable. So I just throw that out there.
Through the chair. If I could, a few follow-up questions I would have. One, if you were to bring in this consultant, how much of your staff time would be consumed in getting this consultant up to speed and how your department operates? It seems to me that, that you and your engineers would have the best knowledge of what the city requires, what new regulations are going to cause to our capital improvement program over the several years, how we need to accelerate it. You guys have that specific knowledge. I know that setting rates is not a typical engineering discipline, and it's probably something that's outside of your, your, your expertise, but at the same time, I imagine that rates across the country are set on very limited, a very limited number of parameters. What we've done in the past historically, we understand how we've set those rates, I don't think it varies that much, where we could do the additional analysis and still get this done efficiently in-house the way it was proposed initially.
Our department still would be involved and would take time on our part, but much less than without the support of the consultant. And overall, in my assessment, with the consultant or without the consultant, the cost will be very close, with the difference than having the consultant will save us time and probably will increase, will increase the quality of the final outcome.
Through the chair.
Irene.
I think some of the, I'm not sure what to call it, but we don't, the end product always seems to be, well, we'll do a 3%, 5%, 2% increase, kind of, and that's what we end up voting on. I think what, not only all of us, but the public needs to understand is that's not where, how we get to it. It's not a simple, well, we throw out a number and we average it over three years, and that's what we're going to do, because there's so many factors involved, and there's so many considerations to get to where we need to go in X amount of years because of the baykeepers, because of all the other things that are going on. You know, it's not, the, the end result may be simple, but the process should be and is fairly complicated, so I think that should be something we think about. Before I stop talking, would these people also look at how we determine the rates? And let me give an example, you know, San Francisco increases our water rates, we have set costs with our well rates, we also have set costs with our capital improvements that we're going to need. Should we be looking at everyone pays X amount, no matter, regardless of how much water you use, and on top of that, have a flexible rate of, based on how much water you use? Because you shouldn't be penalized in some ways because you use less water, but if people use less water, we have to increase the rates because the volume goes down. So are they looking at alternate, alternate ways of setting rates?
It is included in the scope of their contract to look at alternative for tier changes and structural changes to the rate, and you will have the opportunity to entertain that discussion during the process.
Okay, I would be very interested in that information.
Anything else? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution. I know it's touching, and I appreciate what you're saying, because the end result, as I say, we'll probably say we're going to increase it by X, but I think that internal information and the other information we'll gain from this is going to be valuable. So I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Councilmember Medina.
No.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Through the chair. I'm sorry. On page 106 on the resolution, the last whereas says $10,000 from wastewater, should that be 15? It says, the last whereas says an additional appropriation of $10,000 from wastewater, but down below it says 15, so it's the last page. That's my last before you... Unless mine's different.
I believe that that is correct. There was a note in the staff report, in the written report, about how the division occurred, and it wasn't 50/50 because of a previous discrepancy in the way that, that funds were budgeted. So I believe that it is.
Kim.
I think if he's, for some reason, he's what I've been, I feel, I did follow up with the adjustment.
What's not?
It's the budget in the water. So this is correct. Whatever.
Which one's correct?
Yeah, we, can you tell the county, because there's discrepancy within the resolution itself.
There's 10,000 orders budgeted in the water funds, so this brings 15,000 from water, the total is 15,000 from water, 15,000.
Yeah, you were corrected, you were corrected, it was clarified.
Got it, it's the additional appropriation, it's $20,000.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Which is 15 plus 15.
The additional appropriation is 20, 20,000. Yes, I understand that, but if you look at the, the last whereas, it says an additional appropriation of $10,000, and then down below it says an appropriation of an additional $15,000. So... So...
Yes, 15 from wastewater, five in the whereas.
Okay, so the, in the whereas, it should say 15. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so that's my, it includes 15, not 10.
So city clerk, do you have that?
We'll make sure she has it.
All set, okay.
Give me a corrected one.
Okay, good. All right, item 11, we already received a report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. Item 12, comments from council members, I would just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, have a happy holiday, and a happy and a very safe New Year. Irene?
Thank you. I would just like to alert everyone that on Thursday, December 15th, Saturday, December 17th, and Sunday, December 18th, the Beautification Task Force members will be out throughout San Bruno, and will be taking photographs of the holiday lights that will be up. So if you want to make sure that your house is featured, please make sure your lights are on between 5:00 and probably 9:00 o'clock. And then that will become a slideshow presentation that will be on Channel 1 on Christmas weekend and New Year's weekend. And it'll, it'll air every hour, so if it lasts like 10 or 15 minutes, then the next one will be the next hour. So this is, I think this is... So this is, I think this is our eighth or ninth year doing this and it's, we've already had requests to make sure that we go and take people's homes. So we enjoy doing it and we hope everyone enjoys it.
Any other comments?
Through the chair. Happy holidays also, happy Merry Christmas. On January 23rd, there will be a kickoff party at Cappuccino High School. For those I've mentioned before, I am the co-event chair for Relay for Life San Bruno. Mayor Ruane has agreed to be the honorary chair, just be out there. But for those that don't know briefly, Relay for Life is a walkathon for the American Cancer Society. It is the 37th year of this and it is for raising funds for awareness and for research for cancer, for all cancers. And even though it's 37 years, it will be San Bruno's third year. It'll be at Cappuccino this year on April 28th and 29th. I am actively trying to recruit the entire community. We are, we are working together with, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the school districts, and I would love to have the city of San Bruno represented with more than one team, with possibly department teams and get out there and show the community on what we, you know, how we feel about how cancer is in our lives and it is in all of our lives. And so I'll have more information on it, but I just wanted to get that out, that the 23rd is our kickoff party, April 28th, the weekend of April 28th, 29th. Please keep it open. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right. The city council meetings of 2011 are adjourned.